We were started.
What?
Hearing, started the hearing, open to here. It's passed in.
I think when we had those three back to backs. Hello?
We can't hear. Yeah.
They hear you back.
Not the meeting.
They opened up your hearing.
Three. Four one time.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, four one, yeah. I just can't remember when we started the last one. It was already late.
Hugo, that's a snazzy jacket.
Thanks, thanks.
We can't hear them. I think it will respond to a weekend.
Oh, okay. All right. So anybody who happens to be watching, we are having technical difficulties with members of the commission and advisors that are remoting in, so. Please stand by.
I, we can, I can hear you just fine.
Oh.
Yeah, I can now too.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. So back to the roll call.
Okay, roll call Commissioner Kai.
Present.
Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the June twenty fourth Planning Commission meeting minutes. We have one correction regarding the planning commissioners president. Commissioner Vance is listed twice and that should be Commissioner Wydola was also present. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes as corrected or are there any other corrections?
Corrections. Okay, so moved with the correction.
All right, it's been moved in second that we accept the consent agenda and the meeting minutes as corrected. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Council liaison announcements. Do we have our liaison counselor this evening?
I don't think we have. Counselor Giles, if you're there, let us know.
Okay.
I don't think he's there. What I will say, take the moment, we do have our land use attorney on the call, Carrie Richter. So once we get into the hearing, just so you know, she'll be, she's, she's present, she's on now and be able to answer questions for us.
All right. Okay, moving on to staff announcements.
Uh, yeah, thank you Chair Simpson. I have just a few announcements just to update the commission on various projects going on throughout the city. Uh, start with Sherwood West right now. Staff is working on a proposal, the drafting of request for proposals to submit to consultants. Hopefully that happens later this summer. Once we get a consultant on board, they will help us and you come up with a comprehensive plan for Sherwood West to present to the council. But right now, staff has been updating the council on a series of house bills that passed the legislature since this last June. We held a work session with the council back in July, got about halfway through, so we've scheduled one for September. Once we get through the house bills with the council, we're looking for some direction with the council on just how to proceed with Sherwood West. What things should, does the council want us to include as we start this comprehensive planning? So. Uh, that is Sherwood West current status, Old Town Strategic Action Plan. So first forty feet, our consultants have started drafting up draft plan. They plan on submitting that to staff in early August. We will work with first forty feet on any corrections, updates, information we think should be in the plan. And you can expect that coming to you either your last meeting in August or possibly your first meeting in September for a public hearing. And first forty feet, our consultants will be here with a presentation presenting and answering any questions that the commission may have. Uh, moving on to Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven. So this is a house bill that was approved last year. Uh, it has a number of provisions, but one of the provisions that is included in this Senate bill is it. It grants mandatory adjustments from development and design standards. So developers can come in and request, and basically the city is obligated to give them adjustments to, say setbacks or facade treatments, those types of things. However, the Senate bill does allow for an exemption. And we staff are currently putting together our exemption request package and will be submitting that to, to the state later this week. Ethics training. Uh, there was a question about ethics training and uh, there is some ethics training online, although the commission's not required to take it. It was a requirement for council, not the commission. But uh, just to give you a heads up, based on current ethic guidelines, the city clerk will be contacting you via email. And offering you a notepad so that you can take notes, um, you know, put down your thoughts or anything on. Projects that come before the commission. And then once that notepad is full, you would just turn it in and we just keep it uh, here at the city for record keeping, basically. So it's a record keeping thing to comply with new state ethic guidelines. So look for that email from the city clerk.
Get us week, just next week.
By that, basically the, the, a change that said that if you take notes during a public meeting, those are subject to public records requests. So if you guys are taking notes now, just a heads up, those are, that's a public record. So to try and organize that, help organize that for you, we'll give you a binder, you bring it home, take it back. And then if you'd like at the end, we'll keep it for you. If you guys are comfortable kind of, you know, maintaining your own records, you want to keep it at home, that's fine. But we just wanted to help, help if we could, so.
So just clarification, I'm writing, writing down everything Sean said about the updates on my agenda for this evening, so.
Public record.
It's a public record. Do we turn it in at the end or we'll wait for Sylvia to give us notepads that we can then incorporate that in? What's best?
Yeah, I mean, I think our preference was so we're not managing a whole bunch of loose notes is to use the notebook. Um, and then we will, we'll keep it for you. Yeah. At the end, after, after it's used, we'll keep it in case we get a records request.
And that's starting with this meeting, we'll just turn it in or when we get the notepad.
Yeah, for this, for this meeting, we can, we can take the whatever you guys have. Um, but move, I'm not sure exactly when Sylvia is going to send that out, but assuming it's quickly before the next meeting, then you guys will have those. And actually frankly, we can just bring, we can just bring one for you at the next meeting, just so you have one for the next time.
Okay.
Um, update on the tree code. So one of council's goals for uh, this year, next year is uh, to do an update of the tree code. So. That will be included, the tree code update will be included in the planning department's overall scope of work over the next couple of years. Uh, but we would expect the tree code to be updated before the completion of the Sherwood West comprehensive planning. So. Stay tuned for that. It will be coming. Updating on the tannery site, the tannery site is off of Oregon Street and would be the future home of the public works facility. So they'd be moving from Old Town, um, just about a few hundred yards from us right now over to the Oregon site. That sites approximately five acres in size. It does have a lot of soil contamination. So right now, uh, public work staff is moving ahead of regarding obtaining permits. Proper permits to remove all the contamination for the entire five acre site. They hope to get started on that by next summer. And then um, in that same area, just next to this tannery site, the future public work site, there is current construction going on. Some of the commissioners may recall back in two thousand and two, um, there was a permit issued for AFP. Which is a firm that designs, manufactures and installs a fire protection equipment for commercial properties. Uh, they got approved for approximately twenty-two thousand square foot metal building. So that's currently under construction. They've poured the perimeter foundations. They're looking at pouring their, their final slab next week and talking with the building official, he thought they might be completed in the next couple of months. And then finally, just an update on the transportation system plan. So um, currently there is a citizen advisory committee and technical advisory committee. Members appointed to uh, the transportation system plan and they will be having their first meeting next Tuesday. There's already been public engagement, uh, both at the Robin Hood Festival and Music on the Green events. And um, talking with the city engineer, he just let me know that the overall update is moving a bit slow right now. That's because the Department of Land Conservation Development, also known as DLCD, is working on policies for TSP updates for the entire state. So as DLCD is working on those policies, it's kind of created a lag with our consultant. So it's about six months behind. But they still anticipate having the final uh, TSP in front of council by the end of next year.
Wow, that's a moving target there.
Yeah. And that's, uh, that's all for my updates.
End of twenty twenty-six. All right.
I do have one to add if I can. We're, um, it was in the Archer. I don't know if that's been released yet, but Sherwood is bringing back the Sherwood University or Sherwood Academy.
Citizens.
Citizens University. Have you done that?
I haven't, but I'm aware of it.
Okay, great. So it's a, um, maybe a three month program or so, two month program. Um, new residents of Sherwood can, can apply. It's really just a reservation to make sure we have space. Um, and we'll bring, it's on either Wednesday or Thursday night for a few months, maybe every two weeks or so. And we'll bring the various uh, staff at the city to come and present on sort of what the, what their department does. And it's really intended to increase transparency between and, and education, you know, of the public of what the city does basically. And so public works. Uh, city manager, you know, finance director, everyone will, will have a night. And so I'll be there, I'll have a night as well. Um, presented on sort of the insides of city hall, basically. So. You guys with your interest, if you have time, definitely encourage you to, to, to apply and show up and you guys are planning focused, but you guys can hear about all the other stuff the city's doing as well. So I encourage you guys to participate in that if you have time.
Excellent. Thank you.
We're all going to be there in the front row for yours.
I've, I know, I got an audience. I got a following.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing that. All right. Uh, community comments, community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda. And if you plan to testify either under community comments or public hearings, this evening, we ask you to fill out one of the blue cards and turn it into one of the step members of staff. I do not see anybody racing for community comments. Then, and shaking of heads, so we will move on to public hearings. The public hearing on the amendment to the Sherwood zoning and community development code. Case file LU twenty twenty-four zero one eight PA is called to order. Staff, if you could read the hearing script.
Thanks, Chair Simpson. Um, the purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to testify and provide information to the planning commission concerning the annexation code case file LU twenty twenty-four zero one eight PA plan amendment. The commission will conduct tonight's hearing in the following order. One, staff will prevent, present the staff report followed by questions, if any, by the planning commission for staff. Two, we will then open the hearing for public testimony and each person's time will be limited as follow. Applicants will be allocated thirty minutes, but between presentation and rebuttal. Um, in this case, this evening, the city is the applicant. Two persons in favor of the application allocated four minutes each, three persons opposed to the applications allocated four minutes each. Uh, for rebuttal from the applicants, uh, allocated the remainder of thirty minutes. We will then close the public hearing. Final comments by staff are allocated to be fifteen minutes. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission, discussion deliberation by the commission. Recommendation to the city council may be made at the closing of this hearing on, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a certain date, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. Staff will recognize people who have signed up to speak twenty-four hours in advance to provide testimony virtually. When it is your time to provide testimony, please state your name and address for the record. At this time, staff has not received any notification twenty-four hours in advance from anyone wanting to provide testimony virtually. But if you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony form blue cards uh, and submit to planning staff. Planning Commission Chair will recognize people who wish to speak or any other questions that should be addressed through the chair. When you come to the uh, microphone, please state your name, address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. Please be clearly into the microphone. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets relevant approval criterion in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria identified in the staff report. Uh, the staff report is available online and at city hall. The staff report was accessible to the public seven days prior to this meeting. The testimony and evidence must address these criterion or other criteria you believe apply to the decision. Please note that failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals of that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. This evening, the planning commission will be conducting a hearing, an amendment to the city zoning community development code, including uh, annexation procedures and approval criterion. The city council is the final decision maker on legislative hearing matters. A tentative city council public hearing date on this matter is scheduled for August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Staff will then uh, now proceed with the presentation.
Before we get started, procedurally, we have two commissioners on the line. Um, is there, are you guys able to see if they raise their hand on the Zoom meeting? Or is there a way to notify us? Cause I can't see the Zoom.
It's a good point. Hey, hey, Mark, um, we, we usually actually have this TV on in here and that, that's where you can actually see him. So I don't know if we can get that set up really quick. If not, then we just need Mark to let us know if they raise their hand.
It's usually on the Zoom meetings.
If, if not, can you just let us know when they, if they raise their hand?
Yeah, let me check.
Cause they can unmute as well. So why don't we do this? If you guys are remote, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll try and catch it. If not, just, just go ahead and unmute and interrupt us. If you guys have a question and, and you're remote.
We're, I think we're, we're okay. We don't need to troubleshoot this. Yeah, let's just.
Yeah, it's just go ahead. Yeah, keep an eye and again, just speak up if you guys have a comment or a question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, groovy. Um, so just kind of moving into the presentation. Um, here's an application summary with a lot of the information that we've kind of already went over. Really, the city is proposing to amend this Sherwood zoning into community development code by codifying annexation procedures and approval criterion. Uh, this is a citywide legislative action, um, and has been typed, a process under a type five legislative procedure. All application materials were also made available online, um, in conjunction with our normal noticing procedures, um, and can be found on the link right there below the screen. Here you can see the applicable criterion that were identified relevant to the proposed amendment ranging from the Sherwood zoning and community development code, comprehensive plan, statewide planning goals, uh, inconsistency with this transportation planning role. So to provide some background, uh, in the absence of an adopted annexation code, the city of Sherwood relies on ORS chapter two, 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 Metro Code three point oh nine. And the city of Sherwood comprehensive plan policies, which together establish the legal and procedural framework for boundary changes. The city council identified under fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five through twenty-five, twenty-six, um, the following deliverable. Create annexation policies and processes to manage our growth goals as it relates to infrastructure, school capacity and long-term community needs. Additionally, during the Sherwood West concept planning, a future development code regulation update was deemed necessary in order to ensure a fruitful and efficient transition of land uses from rural to urban. Uh, and this included the conceptualization of annexation agreements as uh, highlighted in the proposed text. And uh, dressed in the staff report. It is important to note that these policies, um, and proposed code, proposed text amendment will apply to more than just Sherwood West. It will also apply to the Brooklyn edition and the Talkeon employment area, all areas existing within our urban growth boundary. Here we broken down the proposed amendment, um, starting with the purpose statement, um, just looking at how establishing that this is really meant and designed to facilitate the transference of jurisdictions going from county to city. Um, and additionally stating that this would be subject to a type four procedure for quasi judicial or type five for legislative, um, both with the final decision authority of city council. Uh, right below that, you can look at our submittal requirements that are highlighted, highlighted in our section sixteen eighty-one oh one oh C. Ranging from talking about filing fees, uh, to annexation petition, legal description, notice list and labels. And annexation questionnaire. Um, and a narrative, these pretty much consist of what we've been kind of requiring for uh, most annexations already. So this isn't necessarily creating any new diaspora. Um, this, this is kind of. This happens in conjunction with the county. So when we're working with the county to annex a property, these are the types of information that's already required from a legal standpoint. Uh, at the very top of the page, you can see that this would be the review procedure for all annexation applications, starting with the pre-application. And kind of transitioning all the way to staff recommendation of approval or denial. And then finally approval or denial by city council. Uh, below that, you can see the approval criterion that would be associated with a proposed annexation. Indicating compliance with the Oregon revised statute ORS two, 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 Metro Code three point oh nine. So still keeping in those fundamental framework items into the code itself. Um, ensuring alignment with the Sherwood comprehensive plan, uh, conforming with master plans, ensuring that adequate public facilities and services are provided. And if there's any impacts to existing facilities, how are those being adequately mitigated and addressed? Extending beyond that, there's also the necessity to demonstrate how these public facilities and services would be consistent with other plans beyond the comp plan, such as the utility master plan, comp plan, transportation systems plan. Parks, trails and open space as consistent with the parks and trails master plan. Um, and then again, ensuring transportation, consistent with the transportation planning role. Lastly, point nine, you can see that the city's best interest is, is um, a key feature of the annexation policy, but is. Within the parameters of adopted plan, so essentially creating kind of parameters and a nexus to, to defining that, that interest. So as previously mentioned, a key component of this is looking at annexation agreements. Um, annexation agreements at a fundamental level are designed to look at. Clarifying the timing and scoping of future development, ensuring that adequate infrastructure and public services are provided. And really at the fundamental level, establishing if a commitment between the property owners and the city, um, that these things are going to get addressed um, in a reasonable time. Right below that, you can see what an agreement content would comprise of, um, at, at a base level. This obviously could get more robust or constrict depending on the complexity of the annexation in of itself. But to, to further delineate really the, the, the key responsibilities here is there's the owner commitments and there's the city commitments. E, kind of highlighting the owner's commitments to really to provide that needed infrastructure. And authorizing the city to condition any land use decision or entitlements to ensure that those public, public infrastructure is available to serve the proposed development. And that there's not any gaps in service. Um, and then F really highlighting the city's commitment to apply the master plan and other defined area plans at the time of annexation. Brooklyn, Brooklyn edition is, is a key example, right, of, of a plan that's been adopted. That would be a crucial component on the city's commitment to implement. In certain situations, an annexation agreement may be waived by the city manager. If one or more of the following about, um, on the screen apply. If the site is already served by the necessary infrastructure, that they achieve the minimum densities and do not require additional coordination. Result in really minimal changes to the service area and unlikely to generate substantial infrastructure requirements. And clearly demonstrate that uh, the infrastructure requirements with, are met without additional contractual agreements as kind of defined by the annexation agreement. And then here you can look at some general provisions beyond kind of what we've already discussed. It's, I think it's important to note that conditions of annexation agreements have to be clear and objective and otherwise comply with state housing laws. Um, and are really intended to look at the schedules of significant development related events for each particular parcel as they kind of navigate through um. The processes of annexation all the way to like full build out. What's helpful to understand is that preliminary annexation agreements do have a time limit. They have a one year span unless an application has been deemed complete. Um, and then once an annexation agreement has gone through, or once an annexation has gone through city council and all rights of appeal have been exhausted. Then essentially that is effective and binding with the annexation agreement, um, which will never expire. Uh, you know, these agreements may be included in subsequent land use decisions, um, and they run with the land and are binding in that sense as well.
Can you define runs the land? Is it?
Yeah, so it, it's associated with the, the, the subject parcel. So um, no matter what kind of the.
Goes on to the title of the land? That how it works?
Not necessarily. I think that'll work.
Or to Eastman?
I don't know if it got recorded either. I think the key there is that if the property sells. It's not subject to a new agreement with the new owner, the new, any subsequent owners, this, this agreement would apply to is basically what, what that means.
How would a, how would a prospective purchaser be aware of that?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, I, I'm not aware of annexation agreements being recorded. Uh, Carrie, jump in here if you know otherwise. I mean, basically the. Between the private parties to, to, you know, disclose that from the city side and forcibility, you know, they've gone through a um, um. between the private parties to, to, you know, disclose that from the city side and forcibility, you know, they've gone through a, um, um, likely a legislative process with us. So it's very clear. It's on the books with the city of Sherwood. So it'd be a due diligence question between the private parties. But Carrie, please jump in if your understanding is that these would get recorded or somehow, you know, placed, uh, as a, um, requirement or a note on the, on the title.
So I, so I have seen development agreements be recorded. Um, developers sometimes want them to be recorded if there's multiple component parts, multiple phases, it's a long development process. It makes sense to record them and I don't think there's any prohibition to the city, uh, negotiating that as a term as part of its, uh, annexation agreement negotiation. But conditions of approval are not recorded either. Um, they just exist and, um, an app, a, a prospective owner, um, has a, has, has an obligation to go research what limitations might exist in the zoning code or otherwise applicable regulations. So, um, it's not, I don't see a non-recorded annexation agreement much different than conditions of approval.
So it's fair to say that someone purchasing property has the obligation to come to the city and say, is there, what can I do on my property and staff would have the ability to easily look at any parcel and see the annexation agreement as part of their checklist when they go through. Approving any part of, of parcels.
I think that is, yes, it's not inconsistent with what the, the development code is anyway. If I want to play for development, the, the agreement reflects what the code is already. So you, if you're complying with the code, you're going to comply with the agreement. Is that? What I'm understanding? No, no.
No, so a condition of approval would be like we when we do like fifty houses in a subdivision, the condition of approval says all the fences are going to be six feet tall. But when lot thirty-five sells, the owner may not know that and he goes to put in a fence that's six and a half feet tall. I mean, I'm saying that's a bad example because we have an entire fence code, but if there's something that is in the condition of approval during the application process. And then the lot gets subdivided, the trail, I just see that that trail of um, responsibility gets more complicated when we're going from annexation of several hundred acres, multiple owners, and that gets subdivided, sold and then portioned out, I would, you know.
Uh, and annex, uh, uh, and annex, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead, go, go ahead, Carrie, go ahead.
Um, an annexation agreement is, um, generally to deal with expensive shared infrastructure, to deal with the allocation of the financing of that shared infrastructure. So it's unlikely that the owner of lot thirty-one is going, I mean, unless they're paying some kind of fee in lieu. They're not going to be on the hook for some giant shared infrastructure. These like sort of main sewer pipes and things like that will be, um, put in, will be put in place by the developer developing the subdivision or the sort of subsequent owners that may be developing the subdivision. But by the time we get to the owner of lot thirty-one, my expectation that most of the annexation agreement components would be satisfied.
Okay. And then the rest of it is through our regular code, any master planning, any utility plans, anything else is just regular code.
Yeah, code or, or adopted policy. Yeah.
Or adopted policy. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a great, it's a great comment. Uh, Gene, I wrote a note that, you know, we should consider recording these actually, and I think it makes sense, especially for the large ones. Um, the last thing I'll say is for the larger properties as well, you know, developing these properties, bringing them to the city is a big deal. Um, you better bet like any reason, any reasonable developer is going to come chat with us and ask the question specifically, is there an annexation agreement here? So, um, you know, the smaller ones, maybe not, but, uh, the big ones, they'll be asking that question.
Yeah, and maybe adding it as a checklist item on the parcels as they get annexed, you know, the annexation application has that art. And if it's a phase development, then we have a, like you said, a recorded, maybe that's the threshold that then it becomes recorded. Okay. Well, thank you. Sorry.
Oh, no, that was a great question. Um, so I guess just something to add here is a lot of times when people are planning on these bigger developments like a subdivision or even part minor land partitions, they're coming in for pre-applications. And so staff basically give them all the right available records associated with the property, um, and give them basically a punch list of here's, you know, here's the origin story of this property. Here's the most recent land use decision. Here's everything that's ever happened in between. Um, the last thing we would ever want is for a surprise for a developer, we want to basically be there to support them on their journey.
And, and I think nowadays with electronic storage and retrieval, the records keeping is, um, much easier to delve into and find information about what happened on a particular parcel when it was annexed versus questions about historical actions that were taken pre electronic storage. So.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So does the agreement have like successor ownership clauses or something like we agree with the property owner that this is the annexation agreement?
Yep.
Okay, and, and any future successor owner will be obligated to the same.
That would be a, a, a part of the agreement. Yes.
I see. Okay.
I'm gonna jump in. This is Tyler. If I have a quick question regarding. Looks like the text here has an option for, uh, developer to may require to be entered into an agreement. It sounds like the discretion is up to, um, our staff, city manager, does it, or designee may, may waive those requirements. Is there a reason why a new party would not be getting into some agreement? Like, wouldn't it be, or shouldn't it be a requirement that they sign in agreement unless or until the city manager or designee waives that? But the language I'm seeing is that the applicant may be required to enter versus shall enter.
Yeah. So, so our annexation agreement waivers are really structured around four key, um, situations, right? Uh, you know, is, is the infrastructure already there? Um, the, the primary function of this, uh, this policy or this code amendment is to really just kind of ensure that the necessary infrastructure is going to be there to support the development and that there's really no gaps in services. Um, or, you know, they, they can achieve the minimum densities, uh, which is, you know, generally tied with infrastructural development. Same with three and four. Basically, you know, there's going to be very minimal changes or any changes can be mitigated, um, without a contractual agreement. Um, with the earnest kind of falling on the applicant to provide that information on why additional contractual agreements would not be necessary in, in that situation. They're, they're predicated on not becoming over burdensome to, let's say, somebody just wants to come into the city and essentially just bring in their single family home, doesn't really have any plans to develop. Um, or they have a small, small lot that really can't be subdivided and, and, uh, in a multitude of situations. Um, you know, just having that flexibility kind of built in to, uh, to address these unique situations within the Sherwood West and, and other areas, uh, in the Brooklyn area.
Can I, and if I can add, uh, two things, um, Commissioner Barnes, the, the annexation agreement would come, it's a little odd, but the annexation agreement would actually come before the public hearing. And so I think if I'm understanding your question, Commissioner Barnes, that the, the city manager could waive the agreement, um, going into the public hearing. If they don't, then the annexation agreement is actually struck between staff and the applicant and is made part of the application. So I think that gets to your question of, you know, shouldn't it always be, be required? It, it not in all cases. And like Hugo said, we would waive it if we're, if we're really clear that it's not needed. Um, the, the other part that I would add, even once they annex, they, they still have to come through, uh, land use approval. Like you guys see, see and see and review and approve all the time. So when the city manager would likely waive an agreement is it's an infill lot. We have a few properties that are, um, they're actually surrounded by city limits already. So they're kind of like, they just were missed in, in sort of our growth. Um, very clearly infrastructure all around. They really just need to tie into that infrastructure. Uh, no, no new laterals or so we would, in that case, we would waive the agreement. Hey, we really don't need anything significant from you to be that we need to be on the same page on early on. So just go ahead and annex your, you know, we'll, we'll approve the annexation. And then they still have to come through land use approval. And so that's when we would condition them on hey, frontage improvements or, you know, whatever else that might be. We're very typical of a land use, um, approval. We would capture that at that time. So that's when we would exempt the annexation agreement.
Right. And I, I think for clarification, the city managers or is designate can waive the annexation agreement prior to the city council hearing.
Yes.
But at the city, city council hearing, public testimony will be taken and the city council will take a vote. And if during the public hearing process, it's determined that the waiver needs to be revisited.
Yes.
It would be going through a public hearing process and it may be remanded back to the city manager to.
Yes.
Get an agreement.
Yep.
During the public review process.
Yes, and prior to the, the decision. Yes.
Yeah.
Erica, quick question on that follow-up. Um, even if a, an annexation agreement is waived, the annexation application still has to be.
Absolutely. And I think if, you know, we might get into the public testimony, but I think that was a misunderstanding of some of the testimony that we received. That it was interpreted as the annexation agreement was the, uh, you know, approval or denial. And so they interpreted the waiver as a complete waiver of any type of process. Um, so the annexation agreement is, I'd see it kind of as a, a technical, fairly technical, you know, agreement around infrastructure mainly, but also conformance of land use, you know, and, and other things. But it's going to be really heavily staff-driven, staff applicant. Really try and make sure that we're getting everything in terms of infrastructure or parks or whatever it might be. That agreement gets struck, it can be modified. So if it comes to city council and they say, hey, you know, you guys struck this agreement, and I fully suspect that, by the way, city council probably going to have stuff that we either missed or that they want to see. Um, and so they would, they would, uh, modify the agreement prior to approving the annexation.
Maybe I just need a little, uh, better understanding volunteer guy here trying to figure this out. What, what is it that these annex, annexation agreements do that our code doesn't already do? I mean, if they, if they annex into the city, they're going to have to apply and meet all of our development code. Anyway, you're talking about infrastructure. They're going to have to do, when they come in and apply for development, they're going to have to say, I gotta meet and be able to do all this infrastructure.
Yeah.
Why do that upfront? It seems like it forces them to basically have an entire development plan when they get ready to come into the city. Which then means we're never going to allow any land to come into the city, only stuff that's going to be developed right away.
Yeah.
Can you speak to all that? I'm just, I'm very confused about.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I think.
Concept.
No, no, no. Yeah, I think it's, um, we, we do need to be mindful about, uh, over, overdoing things and, and, uh, duplicating, you know, efforts potentially. So, and we're, we're, we were potentially going to get some comments today, but you know, to maybe address some of, if it's a concern, to address some of the concern, we can talk about, uh, potential, you know, a slight revision to the code to speak to. Uh, using studies again. So for example, they do a transportation study in order to get annexed. They can reuse that again for land use approval so that they're not, you know, duplicating things. I think to answer your initial question though. I, I think as we've seen, development, um, can be, by the time it gets to you guys, even though we have a comp plan, even though we have a code. Um, you know, all of these policies that regulate development, we have a good system, I think. Um, it's still, it's imperfect for sure, uh, but it still, uh, leads to issues that I think the city feels like we can address through annexation agreements. Um, I'll give you, and I'll give you one example. You guys were here for that. Most of you guys were here for this. Um, the, um, Tonkin employment area, we had two applications that came in basically at the same time. Uh, for one of them was, well, I won't say the names, but there were two applications, um, and they both proposed a road on the neighbor's property, if you guys remember that. If you remember the details there, the, the, um, the applicants both interpreted our code and our transportation system plan as being acceptable, you know, as, as supporting their development proposal. Um, so one, we know, one applicant said, hey, I'm reviewing your T S P, all your documents. It's clear to me the road can go on the neighbor's property. Other person said, hey, I'm reviewing all your documents, your code, everything. It's clear to me the road can go on the neighbor's pro, on the neighbor's property. The, the background that I don't think you guys had there was that one of the property owners was looking at annexation and they actually had an annexation application in with us. And they, they put it on pause for about six months to try and negotiate with the city, uh, what the, uh, where the road would be. And we at the staff level continue to tell them the road needs to go on your property, not your neighbor's property, your property. We told them that as they were annexing into the city. And that was based on our, you know, read of, of the code and, and the T S P also access spacing standards, a number of different, uh, sort of code requirements of sort of why we felt like the road needed to go on their property. So they really delayed the annexation. At the end of the day, they pulled the trigger anyways, brought the land into the city. Ignored all of the staff comments and applied for development with the road on the neighbor's property. We could likely address that through annexation. And so it allows us to have that conversation upfront where we're saying, hey, you know, we have this T S P, we have access spacing standards. By the way, the road has to go on your property. And if they don't agree to that, then they may not come into the city. And so I don't know that we're all, that we're always going to use it that way. Uh, but that's an example of where, you know, even though we have a T S P, even though we have all these things, it's all, it can be interpreted differently. And that can lead to issues. And, you know, that was about a year delay that we led to. And so, you know, I don't know what would have happened otherwise, right? Like, do they just not come into the city, not develop? Maybe. So like, we got to be careful there. Um, but I think there's, there's a lot of situations where we really want to front load that conversation, front load the conversation. Um, the other thing I'll say is, um, as Carrie mentioned, and, and anyone else, please jump in here about the why of annexations, uh, agreements. But when we get into Sherwood West, so that's one example of Tonkin employment area. And when we get into Sherwood West, though, there could be fairly large, uh, annexations. Fifty acres, hundred acres, two hundred acres, I mean, fairly significant annexations. Um, development's going to happen over multiple years, likely multiple phases. It's going to be fairly, uh, uh, substantial in terms of the infrastructure that's going to be needed. Um, I just think about an example of, you know, if they're right along Chicken Creek, for example. We know that we need a pretty decent crossing of Chicken Creek. That's a significant piece of infrastructure. It's going to be really difficult for this, us as staff, you know, and frankly, even planning commission as well. Once they come into the city and submit a land use, the, all those clocks, you know, start ticking. Um, it, it can fall apart pretty quick. Um, and so we're looking to, to really front load all of that, especially for the big ones, especially for the complex ones. And for example, on, for Chicken Creek area, we could say, hey, you guys build this, um, bridge and we will give you credits for transportation S D Cs or whatever it might be. Um, it provides the, the developer frankly, some certainty as well about what they're going to be required to do, uh, once they come into the city. So even though we have all this stuff, there's still a lot of benefit to front loading it. Um, and I, I actually would like Carrie, if, if you can jump in in terms of, you know, agreements and kind of how they're used, that, that would be good as well. As you've spoken to that a few times between us, so.
Sure, I, the, the, the point of annexation agreements, at least the ones I've reviewed are to, um, deal with these big ticket items and the allocation of costs. We don't, nothing in our planning documents talks about what something costs and who benefits from it and who shares in the contribution for those improvements in these. I don't know much about the Chicken Creek Bridge, but it, it may be that the one developer whose property this bridge will start and end on doesn't develop enough units to justify the obligation. And so many people may use this bridge. And so in order for a development to pay its fair share, we have to analyze this from a bigger picture. And it's an annexation that we have the opportunity to make those determinations.
I would say Southeast Sherwood Master Plan was also an area where, um, we would have benefited greatly as a community and the developer would have had greater certainty if we had had tied down agreements ahead of time. And I think the benefit to both parties, both the city and the de- developer knowing what they're going. tied down agreements ahead of time. And I think it's a benefit to both parties, both the city and the developer, knowing what they're going into when they go through the process.
Yep. Couple, couple of things. So first of all, you said, don't necessarily care where the funds come from, whatever. Well, not, not quite. I mean, section seven in here says that the applicant must demonstrate adequate funding for the mitigation. I mean, it's talking about, they have to be ready to do all this stuff and show that they have the money to do so. So it's got to come from somewhere and we're going to have to check it. Yeah, that's what basically it says. I think one of my additional follow up questions though is, does this put us in a, in a box? Right now, if there's land, it's not developed, we can work on land use code, change it. And as long as it's changed before the application comes in, then that's the code they have to follow. If we enter an agreement like this, where kind of part of the code is agreed to in advance, we change our development code and then later they apply what set of development code are they obligated to, to adhere to? Cause now we're kind of stuck in a weird, in a weird way potentially.
That's interesting.
So I'm just, I'm curious how that would work out. I just don't want to put us into too much of a box there.
Yeah. One more, I'll answer your questions and I have one more comment. So, um, we, um, if the coach, so we're unlikely to get into, you know, detail that the, that the development code would provide, so that would still come later. We're looking at, uh, very general land uses. So for example, uh, we're going to do a master plan for the residential areas of Sherwood West. So we might say like, hey, we know the, the intersection spacing, the road's got to go here. So this is the new, the new road. The council and you guys through master planning are going to say, hey, we want townhomes on each side of this road or a townhome or, or XYZ. The annexation agreement would make sure that, that they would deliver those housing types in that area. But the, the detailed code itself would still come much later. So if you guys say, hey, we want townhomes to look like this now, that code would apply at that time, um, not at the time of the annexation agreement. Really, it's, it's a little bit, it's bigger picture, kind of master, kind of bigger picture land use planning type of, um, you know, uh, agreements that we, that we get them into as opposed to really detailed, you know, minutia about design or.
It does require that they show they can accommodate infrastructure up to the maximum density. Well, what if density standards change and zones change or, you know, whatever, we have state law changing every five minutes, you know, with this stuff. So if we have to make a change, how do we, do we go back to, actually, now you got to like double your infrastructure, you know, I mean, how does that? Happen? This is why we do things in a one complete application packet at the, at a point in time according to our code.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there is, um, some risk, um, because we are, uh, confirming some things early. Like, I don't think there's any way around that. Like, we are going to say, uh, we are going to basically write in and stamp things and that's it. And so I would say that that is, I don't know if I'd call it a weakness, but that, you know, there's pros and cons to, to doing this. I think the, the pros still outweigh the cons. But I think that is, um, a, a potential con is the lack of flexibility based on what we put in, in the agreement. I think that's correct.
I understand the pros you were saying too, by the way.
And the other thing I'll say for, and I don't want to, uh, speak for developers, but the other thing I'll say was a great example. We, we have been meeting with developers and developing this code, just so you know, like we have heard, heard them out. We've showed them the draft code. One developer made a really interesting comment. It's, it's really stuck with me. Um, and that was, hey, you know, in, in some ways, these agreements are really good, uh, because this is a developer that's active from Hillsborough down to Sherwood, all up and down the, the new growth areas, Tiger and all of these growth areas. And what they said was they felt like developers were overpaying the property owners for the land. They would get into, they would buy the land, they would get into, uh, land use approval or get into the city review and understand the full extent of the infrastructure requirements. And then there's pushback to the city because things don't pencil based on the price that they paid for the land. And so the way I see this and what they said was, hey, you know, the city is kind of getting in, in line, if you will, with the property owner as well. And saying like, well, here's our, like, yeah, the property owner wants that for the land. But don't forget about all of these, you know, infrastructure requirements. And what they said was, that's likely, unfortunately, I guess for the property owner, but good for the city, could revise, you know, the, the, the sale price has to reflect the reality of the, of development potential and the full cost of development. So really, it's, it's, it's clarifying the full extent of the requirements for the developer upfront. And I think, you know, if, if what they said is correct, there, there's likely going to be, you know, they go back and say, hey, the city's going to require a bridge over Chicken Creek on this property. They're firm on it, like, I can't pay you this much for this property. Um, and so it, it sort of corrects, you know, some of the land inflated land values as well, actually. If the developer fully understands what they're getting into with development. So hopefully that's a benefit.
Creates stability a little bit.
Hopefully that's a benefit to everybody, except for maybe the property owner who's looking for the highest price.
I think relating to that, sorry, I'm turning them, relating to that question that, that Commissioner Vance just asked. If you read, um, on pages six and seven of attachment A, the actual language. When you get to the very bottom of page six of 11, where it says F city commitments, that list is very small as compared to the commitments of the applicant for the person who is applying or is creating the agreement. So it seems to me that part of the answer could be the city actually is not committing to very much. It is really the applicant who is committing to the vast majority of what is in the agreement.
Yeah, I think, I think that's true. Um, generally speaking, there could also be, again, if we get into the Chicken Creek Bridge example, like there, it's likely that in certain cases, as we implement, you know, forty years of Sherwood West, the city will be, you know, party to these agreements in terms of delivering something substantial. My guess is sooner or later that will happen, a road, a bridge, whatever it is. Maybe we agree to deliver it before, you know, they get occupancy, something like that, um, depending on, you know, the, the circumstances.
I guess really I'm, I'm leading to a question that came to my mind in listening. Is how much specificity is there in the agreement? In reading through this, my concept was that the specificity would greatly increase in the application itself. And that the agreement was a higher level, more lightweight.
Yes.
For the purpose of bringing to, to the surface any major obstacles that a developer might have.
Yeah. And we can share an example, annexation agreement. So we'll get through tonight, see if you guys are comfortable making a, a recommendation. If not, and we're looking at another night, um, or even if you just want it afterwards anyways, we can share an agreement for another jurisdiction that provides, I think it would really help clarify. It's, it's relatively high level, even for a, a pretty big development. But it's very clear on, you know, the terms. I mean, what, even though it's high level, it's big stuff in there. The, the developer will build this road to this intersection. And it's fairly, it's a fairly simple statement, but it's, and it implies a lot of work that needs to be done. Uh, so the agreements would be fairly high level likely.
It's halfway in between the, the comp plan and the.
Yeah.
It steps us to the next level.
I think it's a great way to say, say, Eugene. Yep.
All right. Well, Hugo, we derailed your whole staff presentation.
No.
So we'll, we'll circle back unless we have any more, uh, questions on the annexation agreements. And then we'll kind of formulate a plan for going through our questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Go, go ahead.
No, I guess I just wanted to add one thing. Um, I mean, really kind of just something to add on to what Eric has already said. I, I think the, the structure of this is to be more proactive about how we approach annexation, how we approach development rather than reactive. I think a lot of times you, you, when you get a development application, the infrastructure will get placed in, right? And then you have kind of these overarching master plans, uh, that are in place that don't really get, I mean, they, they kind of lay it out, but they don't really get into the nuts and bolts of anything. Um, and so you're trying to kind of troubleshoot that in real time as part of like that, the microcosm of that site. Rather than looking at it as part of a larger anomaly. And I, I think that that's kind of really the crux here of why annexation policy, annexation code is kind of so important to, to adopt at this point. And annexation agreements kind of being an additional layer. Yeah, a tool, tools. It's, it's the frosting on the cake, right? You never eat the cake without the frosting.
Um, and just for clarification, you said you mirrored this on an existing annexation. That is already in play in, uh, one of our partner jurisdictions. So we're not creating the wheel, we're following a wheel that has already been proven.
Correct. Yeah. So we, we looked at annexation, um, basically annexation code around the region. Uh, and kind of really formulated it to really fit Sherwood, uh, and kind of what Sherwood's goals and aspirations are.
Thank you.
Oh gosh, where were we? Um, I think we just finished up with this slide.
We did.
So, uh, I know that we had touched base a little bit before this, Gene, um, but really the, um, updates and revisions to the information, uh, since the July fifteenth staff report, um, identified was a removal, partial removal of text within sixteen eighty-one oh two oh G three.
He just paused right there so I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixteen, oh, I'm on the wrong pages.
Page seven.
Seven of eleven? G three, got it.
Yeah. So this was just kind of a removal of a, um, the, the, the final text right there. Uh, that was associated with the previous iteration of the annexation, um, code proposal. Specifically, it, it was kind of getting towards, um, kind of modifications, which, you know, then we ultimately kind of shifted towards the actual annexation agreements. Rather than just kind of living straight in the code.
Okay.
There's a lot of other non substantive edits. Um, thank, uh, thank you, Gene. I will incorporate these and, and get them back to y'all. And I believe that it, um, from July fifteenth report, um, but staffers more than happy to take any, any adjustments or, or recommendations from the planning commission.
So we have been focused on the code itself. And then there's also the staff report that has to accompany it. So I would ask the commission if we would like to stay focused on the attachment A code language before we address the staff report and the conditions for review and approval.
I think that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Let's address the source, the main thing.
All right. So there's no more changes or comments that you have, Hugo?
No, no, and this, this was. No. And this was before our conversation. So I know there's a little bit more, um, additional stuff there. But yeah, I'm happy to discuss any, any other changes from the other commissioners as well.
All right. So, um, I guess I would open the floor with attachment A. Let's start, let's start at page one and just go through in a, in a best logical e- example I've got, which is, you know, going through the sections. So, um, my, my, my first question starts on page one, which is the application type and review procedure. It's subject to a type four or a type five. And we've changed the type four and type five so that neither of these hearings processes go through the planning commission. They are, they both go straight to city council. And I don't, I, I asked the question, I don't know if that was at council's request or, um, at a staff level decision. And so I would, I would put it out there to say if council wants us to be part of the process, then we would need to look at revising the definition of how type four and type five quasi judicial and legislative annexations occur. I don't know how the planning commission feels about it. Usually when we do type fives, we make a recommendation to council, just like we're doing this evening. And so this is going to skip us completely. I think on small annexations, it seems appropriate and efficient to allow council to make a decision. But as we look at what's coming forward to us with Sherwood West and hundreds of acres at a time. And right now we have, fortunately, several council members that have planning commission experience. If the council were to turn over and have less experienced counselors that haven't been through the, the Myers of a planning commission packet, I don't know if dotting i's and crossing t's on how that works. So I'm just throwing it out there to say, I mean, great, council wants to do all the work, but I also feel a comfort level of knowing that as commissioners, we bring a, a level of, um, experience that I think would be valuable, especially if large legislative actions are happening.
Yeah, you know, just to speak to the, to why it was set up this way, I think we were, again, we were mimicking some other codes and, and this is the way they're typically set up. But that doesn't, I, I don't believe, my understanding doesn't preclude you guys from looking at it. If the, and I think you raise a good point, Gene, um, about Chair Simpson, about, you know, your guys' expertise and, and being in the weeds on some of these plans that are going to then be required, you know, to conform to with the agreement. So what I'd say, if you're open to it, is we can, you know, when we get to city council as part of this process, have a, you know, as part of our presentation, run this by them. I mean, I'm totally open to saying, hey, you know, planning commission through their public hearing has offered, you know, uh, uh, to, to review this prior to coming to you guys. And if you guys are open to that, you know, great. So we, we can ask them. And if, then if they say yes to that, um, then might do a quick modification of the code and, and add planning commission to the type four, type, uh, four. I mean, I would even say both, like, we can just ask them for all of it. Hey, you know, what do you guys think about all of it? And we can just adjust the code appropriately.
Do we want type fours and type fives to mirror the existing code language? Or do we want to have to go straight? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll run that by council. We have not, it had, it did not come at the direction of council. I haven't had any conversations with council. You know, and I, and to be honest with you, I really don't know why, uh, the other codes are direct to council. I'm not sure. But, um, in my mind, there's no reason that we couldn't take this to you. Um, and it is more consistent with our current policies.
I, I had a similar note. I, I agree with that sentiment. Uh, mine was more basic, just should larger parcels come through us. But particularly since there appear to be components in, within this agreement that have to do with our land development code, we should probably have a look.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great comment. We, we will add that and we will run it by council and potentially it'll be modified before it gets adopted.
I wanted to ask, um, related directly to that, the last sentence of point B. Is the applicable review procedure shall be determined by the city based on the size and scope of the request. So I inferred from that, that not all the detail is in this code, but that was probably a, a bad assumption on my part. But it, that is, to me, what that sentence seems to imply is that it will be based on, um, a level, a size of the annexation application.
Yes. And, and specifically what we're talking about there, about the review procedure is whether it's quasi judicial or legislative. And there's some case, case law around when something basically has to be processed as a quasi judicial decision. Um, and so sometimes the, the circumstances are such that the only option we have is quasi judicial. And therefore we would do that. Um, but we would take those case by case when they come in to determine a large majority of these are going to be legislative type five. Small, smaller ones, under certain circumstances, we would be required to process as a type, as quasi judicial. Um, and that's what that statement is, is basically when it comes in, we will evaluate, does it meet the, you know, does it meet that test for a quasi judicial, uh, procedure?
So I, I misinterpreted the sentence.
Well, no, I think I had the same question, but the way you explained it to me is ORS and some of the other case law. If we, like, type four to type five or hearings officer to planning commission, when it comes to whether it's fifty lots or fifty one lots, that's a defined number that we control. Quasi judicial or legislative is not a decision that we get to make. It's case law defined at a different level. And so we, if we lock ourselves into a particular size or specific, specificity and case law changes, then our code would be out of compliance.
Yeah.
Is that?
And I think that's, I think that's right. Yeah.
In my layman mind, that's what I heard was state laws making rules that we don't want to lock our code in and then be behind the eight ball.
Yeah. And, and that's already happening. Our code is already out of date where, you know, we've set up procedures. The state law changes and says, now you have to process all these as this. Now we're out of date, we got to change it. And so in this case, having a little bit more flexibility, I don't think that quasi judicial versus legislative is going away. I don't think. Um, and so, and so, uh, we would allow, we would, uh, we would evaluate at the time, but between the two.
I, I do have a question. So if you go to city council and they say, yeah, let's have the planning commission review things. And something came through as an annexation, uh, application, it was quasi judicial, but city council didn't see it.
I think we can take quasi judicial to city council still, Carrie? Yeah.
All, all, all annexations have to go to.
All, all, all annexations have to go to city council because they change the boundaries of the city.
Okay.
And existence have two components. They have kind of a land use component and a political component. And that all gets merged together in this review that is either going to be a type four or type five.
Thanks.
Beautiful.
Would that make these legislative actions or quasi judicial actions?
Um, the, the, the difference between legislative and quasi judicial has to do with whether you have an unbiased decision maker, right? A quasi judicial decision, you have an unbiased decision maker because you're applying city policy to a particular proposal and you would be doing that in, in the case of an infill lot where you have one lot. In that case, you're not making policy about one infill lot annexation that needs, you know, that has a, a septic tank, you know, septic tank failure needs to connect to city services. You're, you're applying the policy in that case, not making it. When you're reviewing an application for a hundred acres, you're making policy. And so that's a legislative decision and it doesn't come with the same, and it doesn't come with the same quasi judicial unbiased decision maker guarantees.
Even if it has a contractual obligation of the property owner to adhere to our development standards that we review?
Well, that's just a contract.
Okay.
And I, and I think that does that response a little bit. Thanks, Carrie. And I think that gets a little bit to your initial question about the why, you know, is like, you know, annexations are, they're about land use and development, but they're also about other things as well. It's not just about land use and development. We're, we're annexing land into the city. It's going to have resources, you know, need, need, need of resources for police, for schools, for fire, for all those sort of things. And so that's a.
None of those were in here, by the way. It's only about infrastructure.
Thank you. And so I, and I can clarify that as well. Actually, I'd clarify in a second. But, but, you know, it, it is also a, a political decision about, you know, where the city is in terms of its, you know, everything, finances, you know, everything. I mean, the city just went through budget cuts. Fortunately, the police were not impacted. But, you know, the thing, things can change. And so, you know, it's not just, you know, do they meet, can they meet the development code or not? Yeah, I think most developers can meet the development code. But is the city ready to accept this land into the city? And I think in most cases, you know, I hope that, that the answer is yes, we need more housing, we want more jobs. But we, we need to check at that time before we bring the land in. So. And then what else was I gonna, I forgot there was.
The police, fire.
Public facilities versus urban services.
You know, they're, they're not specifically listed in here. What I would say about those services is that the, you know, the comprehensive plan still has all of those, all of those elements in it. And so we still can look at schools and police and other things. It would just be through, through the comprehensive plan.
So your, your statement is like, the public facilities and services are provided in a manner consistent with the city's adopted master plan, utility plan, comprehensive plan, and transportation plan. The comprehensive plan is all encompassing of urban services.
Yes, and it includes schools. So for example, the, the comprehensive plan is going to have a policy around school capa, you know, that the city shall do something, you know, ensure adequate, help coordinate with the school district, coordinates the, the right word, coordinate with the school district to ensure adequate school capacity. And so, you know, if, if for some reason, the school district is overwhelmed by all the whatever new development or something, or influx of students for some reason, and they're like, hey, we, you know, we can't take this, then, you know, it'd be evaluated at that, at that time through the comprehensive plan.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that's, we're kind of in pages one and then rolling into two and three. Does anybody jumping in with concerns about three and five had the same questions that I was just trying to get in my head, public facilities and urban services? And Eric, just address that with the comprehensive plan clarification?
Uh, three, remember three, on page three, wondering about these words that are used. Assuming the maximum intensity land uses and then three A, the very end, land uses and intensities in addition to maximum intensity.
Yeah.
Are we meaning to meet, to write density? Is that what we intend here? Or?
No, because it could be intensity, because it could be an employment land, which, which typically for employment land, we don't use the word density is mainly refers to resident, density is typically residential only. And so that it just captures non residential land. So that, that's the reason for that language.
Is that a well-known standardized term for code? And is it well understood that's what that means? Or is, is it defined somewhere? I guess. I'm, I'm used to seeing density. Everybody knows what that means. Intensity is.
Yeah.
Like, I didn't realize it was used in that context.
Yeah, I think it's okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, actually, I suppose on number three, I was just curious, because this is the application demonstrates how the property is served or will be served by all this public facilities and services. I was just kind of wondering, how would the applicant know that? I mean, we're the ones that build city sewers and, you know, all that stuff. I mean, wouldn't the city be the one that determines how that gets done? Or, or is it just saying that they would need to include all that work with you guys in the development, or excuse me, in the application for annexation?
We would have a, we, we will do some planning. We'll do a master plan, utility master plans. We'll do storm master plan, water master plan. And that will, that will account for likely that the most intense land uses to ensure that, you know, we, we are planning for adequate capacity ourselves. They would also do that. And really what this is three and three A is getting to is like, they would do it as well. And I guess it would, you know, they would, they would verify, they would verify. This gets to like, yeah, if we feel like there's a lot of work that's already been done and they don't need to do it, that we would say, hey, we've done this master plan already, just use this, like, that would be fine if we were comfortable with that. But really what three and three A is getting to is trying, it, it, it's mostly around phasing is what I'd say. And so we really like the, the three A, you can see it kind of gets them out of the most intense. So if they're, so if the zoning, for example, allows, let's use density for an example, it allow, it allows twenty units per acre, but they're proposing ten units per acre. They may not need to deliver infrastructure for twenty units per acre. I think the city wants to know that and see like, hey, if they change the plans, you know, that, that, okay, what is it going to be actually? And then they can deliver to that if they change the plans. But if they're really only going to do ten units per acre, and it's in the back of the planning area and not serving subsequent development, then maybe they can deliver the road and all the, the capacity right at their intensity. So it's intended to not have them overdo it if they don't need to. And it's also intended to help with the phasing as well, actually, of, you know, getting, getting whatever's appropriate at, at the time.
But they'll have the city's master plan available to them for this stuff too. So they'll be able to say, here's how I'm going to connect to it and all that.
Yes, yes. And really, you know, this, some of this language actually came from some of the back and forth we did with Metro, and we're happy to, to describe all the changes that we made. But there was a concern from Metro that if we, you know, if a developer struck an agreement with us, and this gets to your point earlier, if, if a developer struck an agreement with us and they said, hey, we want to do ten units per acre, and then they change their mind and they say, well, actually, we, we never mentioned ADUs, but we really want to do ADUs as well. A, that's allowed in many cases just outright. So I'll just say that. But Metro's comment was, hey, we're concerned that you're going to require the developer to come back for, for revised, you know, agreement. It's going to be cumbersome, it's going to waste time and all this stuff. And so the city staff responded with, okay, well, then we'll require them to study the most intense, therefore they don't have to come back. And then we added A to say, but also tell us where you're actually going to land this thing. And maybe that's where we can agree to. So most of this was actually in response and trying to address a metro concern, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. And the only thing I would kind of add to that, too, just, just for clarification is that none of these parcels will be able to go below the minimum established densities. You know, they're, they're, you know, at, at full buildout, there may be some phasing associated with it, but they're not going to be allowed to go below the minimum density at any point.
Right. There's, there's a min and a max in each zone.
Yeah.
Right. All right. Anything else on page three?
My, my only follow up question, I mentioned it earlier, but that they have to demonstrate adequate funding for some of this stuff. That is, I mean, it's one thing to kind of have a plan in place, planning to develop at some point, but that, that kind of is like, you got to actually put your money where your mouth is here and be ready to go.
What, what page is that on?
That's same page, page three, number seven, number seven, second paragraph, right in the middle, says the application must demonstrate adequate funding for the mitigation. It's almost like a down payment into saying, you're going to actually move on this. And how would we even, so we might, I mean, how would you even verify that? I mean, you're looking at financial statements, are you taking a assignment or deposit account or something? Or?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, it's a good question. Commissioner Barnes, like, I, I think we could clarify this. I'm to, I'm, I'm certainly open to that. I, I don't think it means like, hey, we want to see the money in the bank. I think it does actually mean more of a plan, actually. That, that's how I read it. And, you know, anyone else can jump in here. But like, for example.
Can we just change it to the application must demonstrate an adequate funding strategy?
Plan, plan strategy. Yeah, either one of those.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. I think the re, why I think it's important for, for this financial question to be part of this is because oftentimes in the planning, we don't know what it's going to cost. And it's usually the applicant who is, has the boots on the ground that can tell the city, this road is going to cost X. And when we start in an annexation review to talk about, it will cost a lot more than the city thought, or it will, you know, that putting actual dollar figures, not that the applicant has to have the money in the bank, but having an applicant tell the city, open the discussion with the cost, with, with actual cost can inform the annexation agreement, can inform the annexation decision. So even if you want it to be a plan, I think that's fine, but I would encourage you to keep the financial component on the table, because it is the applicant who is in the best position to tell the city what something will cost to build.
And it kind of makes the numbers real.
It seems like what, what I just heard was that the wording should be changed because to say the applicant must demonstrate adequate funding is clear, and it's not what we want. And what we do want, it seems like, is for the applicant to demonstrate adequate knowledge of the actual cost.
I would revise that slightly. And I mean, really, we want a, a clear strategy, I think is an okay word. Plan is also an okay word. For example, there's a concept called reimbursement districts where that's kind of what Carrie mentioned earlier. Maybe the developer controls the land that a, you know, a main road or trunk line or something is on, but it's really not a fair, or it's not fair or whatever to, to have them pay for it all, or reasonable to have them pay for it all. They could set up a reimbursement district. So basically, they, they, they pay for it upfront through a loan or something else. And then as developers downstream develop their properties, they, they pay that developer back. That's something that we do right now. We're doing in the Brickman District. So they come, the next developer comes in for their building permit, they pay the city that money and we pass it on to the developer. And so it could be that they, you know, again, they don't have all the money in the bank, but we would want to know, like, hey, they're planning to pay through, for this through a reimbursement district. Oh, great. That makes sense. That's going to work. That's a plan. Great. You know, and they can.
So again, you're, you're advising or we're, we're theorizing here that we're going to throw in the word strategy.
I would say plan. I would say plan. Plan is the best. Yeah.
Adequate funding plan.
Adequate funding plan. So we just have to have the word plan. Cause I, I'm, I'm thinking about making motions later.
Yeah.
What kind of language do I need to say?
Plan is good.
Okay, so adequate funding.
So. If I may, the, the application must include a detailed financial plan and cost estimate that demonstrates adequate funding, or not even adequate funding, but just the application must include a detailed financial plan and cost estimate for the work that may be required or something to that effect.
Yeah, yeah, that works.
That letter sounded good to me.
Okay.
Sounded smart, Commissioner Barnes.
Okay. Say that again. Say it slower.
The application must include a detailed financial plan and cost estimate. And then you can either change it, like, that demonstrates adequate funding or that estimates the amount of work required.
I think you just stick with that first one. Yeah. Application. Oh, man, now I'm getting mixed up, but.
Must include a detailed financial plan and cost estimate of.
Of future build out of the site.
Something, something that. Yeah, it's not. So I think really what we're getting to is, so if you guys. The, the, yeah, it's really, it's just the infrastructure.
Infrastructure, second seven.
Yeah, we can do this on the spot. You guys can also just direct staff to make, make that.
I think, I think we all.
No, I, I think it, I think it's good that staff just gets input from Carrie and hearing our discussion comes up with at least adding the word plan in what we have. And if we want a detailed.
Yeah, I wonder if we're being too prescriptive at this level.
Yeah.
Yep.
It, it might be too, yeah, we'll get.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that tweak.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Page three, page four, conditions of approval, the purpose of the annexation agreement. Page five talks about the annexation agreement, what's going to be included.
Quick question on page five. The, I was struck by four, on page five again, on point four and point four A. It seemed to me that A was a standalone and wasn't really a four A. It was a five and then five would become six, so on and so forth. But that's a pretty minor point. I was just wondering if anyone else had that same thought. Like every other, you know, sub point throughout here, it directly relates into me. And it seemed like it was, those two were fairly independent.
Four and four A?
Yeah.
On page five?
Yeah. Again, in my opinion, it's a minor point.
Four is the sufficient detail of the applicant, then four A talks about anticipated phases of the development.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're related.
Okay.
Commissioner Tilotson, yeah, I think they are related.
All right.
It's talking about the public facilities, public services, and whether it's development in detail or the timing of anticipated phases. Yeah. I could have probably argued either way, but.
I, I kind of have one more sort of back to big picture thing. I mean, this whole thing is very much crafted around a development anticipation, obviously. And I just want to bring that back to, is it the intent to basically not ever allow just land to be annexed into the city? Because it seems like they need to come in with a plan, infrastructure for the density standard.
To develop. Yeah.
Ready to develop and go. So we will, I mean, this will effectively over time eliminate bare land from city bound, within city boundaries. I mean, I would think, is that, and I'm just wondering about the downstream ramifications of that. Like, we just did an economic opportunities analysis, we take inventory of land, that's in the city, that'll always be zero. So I just, I'm just curious, is that the intent here?
I, I think the intent is to provide flexibility. It could go either way. An applicant could come in and have no idea what they want to build. And the city says, that's fine, but you're going to have to build to the maximum intensity, and that will require these pipes. Or an applicant could say, here is my whole layout. And the development agreement will then identify the improvements necessary to serve that layout, considering the connections that the city needs beyond. The idea here is flexibility for an applicant to be anywhere on that spectrum. But being cognizant that if an applicant comes in and has no idea what they're going to build, they're going to be subject to the most intensity obligations, if that makes sense.
Yes, except that on page four, annexation agreement, part A and purpose, says that, it says that, let's see, annexation agreement intended to ensure awareness of annexation process, as well as a reason, as well as a reasonable certainty to the property under the city and the public, that the scope and timing of subsequent development of the property will occur in a manner that facilitates timely orderly construction. So that's not really an out. I mean, they got to come in with a plan if they're going to be annexed. They got to know what they want and win. And that, that worries me just a little bit.
Yeah, I think the way to see the, the, the purpose statement here is it's, you know, are we going to hit this? I think if we tried to hit this every single time, right? Meet the purpose statement every single time, then yes, we're going to need detailed plans. What I will say is I. What I will say is I think, you know, i- if there's a case where they come in with, you know, with, with less of a plan, but they still come in, and therefore the purpose statement as it relates to, you know, reasonable certainty to the property owner, the city, the public, et cetera, obviously, that is missed a little bit. We still, as we adopt this thing, move the whole thing towards more certainty, right, the whole, the whole thing. I think that's, I think that's what, like, I understand the, the read on it, which is like, every time we do this, it's gonna provide certainty. The way I see it is, we're adopting this, this, this code, and big picture, it is gonna provide more certainty. Not, but, but I would say maybe not in every single case, and, and maybe that's okay, if it's, uh, again, a small property, maybe an employment piece of property that's, you know, has less impacts to neighbors or something like that. So that's the way I see this, the, the purpose statement is. We did, we got some comments from Metro along the same lines as well.
So how does this? So I'm an island in the middle of, in my hypothetical world, my parcel is an island in the middle of a parcel, a bunch of parcels that want to come in. And that's where the major road's gonna be going through, and it becomes a city-initiated annexation. Is there accommodation? Because my island, I wasn't coming in to be annexed, now the city has annexed me.
I don't, I don't fully understand the question.
So do I have to follow, if I get annexed by the city, what rules apply to me now that I'm in the city? Not because I petitioned to be in the city, but that the city brought me in for their purposes of developing a road, or to make a water connection or sewer connection.
I think a city-initiated annexation would be exempt from the annexation agreement requirements. The city wouldn't force the owner to enter into an annexation agreement on a city-initiated annexation.
Do we need to state that in the code at all?
When was the last time the ci, when was the last time the city initiated and annex, forced an annexation on an owner?
Uh, talk on an planetary area to get a road in, correct? Nope.
Oh, voluntary by the applicants.
Voluntary, ultimately voluntary.
Well, truly, truly vol, truly voluntary. Uh, we could have approved that road, uh, while those properties were in the county. Uh, we would just would have had to go through a county land use process for that road. Um, and instead, we, uh, appro, we have good relationships with those owners, we annex them, they sign the agreement, and then, um, the annexation application, and then they were, the road was subject to our review. That's why we did the annexation. But, uh, to my knowledge, answer Carrie's questions, we've never forced an annexation on it, since I've been here on anybody.
Okay.
So I think it's fairly uncommon.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Um, just to follow up to what Commissioner Vance was mentioning with the purpose on page four, um, I, A. If you go down just to point C, the, most of what is in the purpose is then repeated on the next page, um, in more de, in a lot more detail. And so on point C, it says contents and leather, unless otherwise agreed by the city, an annexation agreement shall include. And there's quite a lot. And so to me, that clearly gives the city the ability to say, we can agree to not require all this detail. And so when you get up to, back to A on the purpose, it makes me think that that first sentence, the annexation agreement is intended to ensure, that's probably still fine wording, but you could back that off slightly to be more is intended to increase awareness or to improve awareness of the annexation process, so on and so forth.
I like that. Okay, I think it's a good change. So instead of, uh, as reasonable, as well as reasonable certainty, we could just change it to, uh, as well as, what did you say? I thought it was good language.
Increase awareness.
As well as, uh, increase awareness, you know, for the property owner, uh, the city and the public, that the scope and timing of subsequent development will occur in a manner that, yada, yada, yada. I think it's good. It softens it a little bit. It was fine.
Okay.
I think he was referring to the first part of the sentence. The annexation agreement is intended to increase awareness of the annexation process.
Oh, thank you. I missed that, I'm sorry.
And again, point C makes it clear, they don't have to, if the city says they don't have to.
Oh, yeah, that's right. And that's with all applications we do. We can typically require less if it's not required to get it.
Which allows for a landowner potentially just to become part of the city.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, again, I, I, um, I'll just say this, like, we're not, um, there's no intent to really use this with a heavy hand, like, it really is, like, especially if it's a small owner, or, you know, there's really no concerns, like, it's very likely that we'll get some of that no agreement, and it's a pretty fast track to annexation. Um, it's really the big stuff that we, that we're trying to catch. It's the big, it's the big stuff that we're trying to catch with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Page five. Six.
Question, just.
Yes.
Are the chat that I see, is that part of the public record? And if so.
I can't see it.
Yeah, so I just wanted to declare, if, who's ever manning that, I did put in two sentences that we can discuss. I can read them out loud as well, for the record.
Gonna have to read them out loud, cause we can't see them here.
Okay. So the first one was just to follow up on that previous. The application must include a comprehensive infrastructure and financial plan, including cost estimates that demonstrates the feasibility and adequacy of the proposed mitigation measures. That ties back into that discussion on seven.
Yes, perfect.
And then the last point that we were talking about for plans, whether full plans and, and, you know, flexibility. The application must include a preliminary infrastructure and financial plan, such as thirty percent design plans and cost estimates that demonstrates the feasibility and adequacy of the proposed mitigation measures. While final plans are not required at this stage, the applicant must provide sufficient detail to support a credible path toward implementation.
And where are you proposing this? I got lost.
That was that same seven. It's basically, if we, those two sentences were just my thoughts on how we could wordsmith some of that for some flexibility, but again, just recommendations and.
Yeah, and I would, I would suggest that, should we motion to move this along, it comes with the condition that you guys implement under advisement. You know, the, the appropriate language.
Yeah, that's what I recommend. I think wordsmithing, unless you guys have really strong feelings about the specific words, what I'd recommend for the motion is to just, uh, capture the areas and then the intent of the change, and we'll work on it with, with Carrie. The, the, um, just so you guys know, at the commission level, uh, when we go away after the hearings, Hugo will make the changes. That does get sent to Gene for signature. So Gene is kind of your check on, you know, did we get this right based on the council or the commission intent or not? So, uh, that's, that's how the system works. Gene signs it, and then we pass it on to city council.
And they can wordsmith it all over again.
Yeah.
I'm on page five. I know I've argued kind of, almost argued, maybe not argued, but questioned to one direction of loosening. Now I'm wondering about the other direction. If we're asking them to adhere to infrastructure and stuff like that, and we're worried about kind of controlling for what comes in, why not things like our design standards as well? You know, stuff like that, which we're increasingly worried about in our cities.
That's what the, the compliance with the master plan.
Compliance to the master plan, okay. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Moving on to six. Seven.
I have a comment on seven. On G three. It says a preliminary annexation agreement expires, and then goes on. And it seems to, I'm, I'm betting that it could just say an annexation agreement expires. In other words, there's no such thing as a preliminary annexation agreement?
There is.
There is.
So the preliminary agreement is done with staff and the applicant. And then that is added to the application and sent to city council for hearing.
But, but there's only, so I think that still agrees with what I was saying. There is an annexation agreement. There is an annexation application. There's no such thing as a preliminary annexation agreement.
In other words, when do they sign it? I think that's the question, cause that's when it becomes.
Well, I think that the different, they're differentiating a preliminary annexation agreement versus an executed annexation agreement that's been signed by all parties.
So is the one that they're making the application with signed, I guess is the, that would be the distinction, I suppose.
It wouldn't be signed by the city council because it hadn't have been voted on, correct?
Yeah, and just to, just to add to that, annexation agreements aren't binding until it's passed through city council, and all rights of appeal have been exhausted.
Okay, I guess my confusion is on both the difference between a preliminary and an executed. And it makes me wonder if both of those words should be taken out and just say, an annexation agreement expires. An annexation agreement signed by all parties and annexed by this, or I guess that sentence would have to be.
Y- yeah, I think with, with the, the concept of preliminary annexation agreement also is to imply that it could potentially shift based on, um, council. Uh, and so once, once they have signed it, and it's kind of, kind of come to full fruition, uh, then that's when it essentially becomes an executed annexation agreement.
So, but I.
Just say it's signed.
But I see, I would say a preliminary annexation agreement expires one year from the last dated assigned by the applicant. Unless the city, cause the set council wasn't signing the agreement. Is city manager signing the agreement?
Should be an agreement between the city manager and the applicant, and then reviewed and potentially modified by the city council.
So in that, in that respect, like Commissioner Chilton says, it's the same agreement. It's a signed, it is executed.
You know, I do, I do think we could probably, for now that I'm reading, I think we probably clarify that one as well. Uh, but basically how it's gonna work is there's a, I, I could go either way, but I think I would call it a, just for ease of understanding and reference, a preliminary agreement that gets signed by the city manager with the applicant, and then it's finalized by, basically by the city council approving the application.
There's gotta be some legal word effectuated or something, I don't know. I understand what you're saying too.
We can, um, if you guys want to add, add this, add this one to the motion, we can clarif, clarify. Um, but does that make sense about the process? Preliminary, and then really it's only final, final once the, uh, city council adopts the approval.
Is there language in the agreement itself that says that too? Like, this is not, everybody might sign this, but it means nothing until.
You know, we, yeah, we can put that, we can put that in, yeah, there'd be, we could put that language in there. Um, but really, like, an annexation agreement, like, you still, i- i- like we mentioned earlier, it, it is not an annexation approval. So I think we're still, we're still okay, but.
For you guys, I understand what you're, I get it all, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
There's three different words that are used, preliminary annexation agreement, and executed annexa, annexation agreement, and an adopted annexation agreement, so.
Yeah, we can clean that up. Why don't you just have us make a motion for us to clarify that, that language as well? Yep. These are really good, really, these are, these are really good changes, so I appreciate the input.
Um, just for, for clarification, that, that last sentence where it talks about adopted annexation agreement. That was already removed, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
What? It was already removed in the staff.
We saw a slide that showed it being.
Oh, the last sentence.
Yeah, we already struck it.
You're still gonna clarify the rest of the paragraph, it sounds like.
Yes.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
I didn't, put a line through it. I just made a note. My bad. All right, we're moving on to eight, which is a different part of the code that talks about the hearings process. That we've already discussed, and you have in your motion to ask staff to put comments in their staff report to city council that was a judicial and legislative annexations through planning commission.
Yup.
It's kind of where we were leaning, but we didn't change the code, not.
Yeah, yeah, we've notated.
Okay. And page nine, and I'm just gonna say nine of eleven, ten of eleven, and then eleven of eleven does not exist, just saying. And then on ten of eleven, there's a typo on F. It, let it, legislative annexations go directly to city council and do not require a recommendation by the planning commission. If we're gonna stay that language, the, it should be do not, not, does not.
Yeah, no, thanks, thanks for the catch.
So. Any other questions about the amendment itself? There's a lot of good questions and discussion on this. Appreciate everybody taking all the time to go through this. So, um.
At the risk of just, can we go through just really quickly now, as while it's still fresh? Can we just go through each of the changes and just write them down real quick, so it's on the same page?
The three that I wrote down, since I was tracking for movement, and I was gonna kind of leave it a bit open, but basically the, the motion is gonna be with this. It's gonna be the second motion here, the following modifications, I was gonna say, clarification on attachment page three regarding adequate funding.
Yup.
Clarification on attachment page four regarding awareness of annexation process. And, and clarification of attachment page seven, uh, which is to clarify paragraph three surrounding the annexation agreement. Some, something to that effect is what it was.
Really the second.
Yeah. It's all the staff report to go.
Officially, yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Just wanted to make sure we got them all.
All right, was there any more? Did I miss one? Okay. All right. Staff report.
Um, as noted, I s- sent in a non-subsidative, uh, edits to Hugo earlier. The ones that I think that changed that, the meaning of the staff report, start on page one of eighteen. Item C. The last sentence says, two subsequent continuances were approved at the May and June hearings and therefore rescheduled. And I just wanted to say the initial evidentiary hearing to July twenty second, cause the first hearing we had were just continuances. So this is the first evidentiary hearing. And then it's, the next sentence says, no staff report has been released, but we had received our staff report dated April fifteenth, so if we could modify that to acknowledge the staff report that was distributed and subsequently replaced from the April fifteenth. And then in E on page two, the review criteria, omitted goal ten, but goal ten is part of the review criteria per attachment. E, I don't know why I said that, but, oh, because, anyway. I spoke with Hugo and he said it should include goal ten. And then on page five, under three, agency comments. Um, it says that no agency comments were received as of the date of the report. But our attachment C is Metro's letter. It doesn't have any, um, I was just asking if staff could um, clarify that, um, Metro, our partner agency responded, and attachment C and subsequent communications were um, internal to staff, resulting in the final staff report that was received dated July fifteenth, cause it infers in the Metro letter that they were going to um, offer suggestions that will be helpful to the planning commission, but we didn't receive anything else, but I want to acknowledge that we did get uh, agency comments in a letter, and that the rest of the conversations were held with staff directly and resulted in a new staff report being produced for the July hearing. And at the top of page, bottom of page five, beginning of page six, the plan amendment review criteria specifically states that an amendment to the text of the comprehensive. That an amendment to the text of the comprehensive planner zoning and community development code must be based upon a need for such an amendment as identified by council or commission. So I'd like the first sentence in the community need. That says. During other planning. Processes, the council and planning commission identified the need to review and add the annexation. Policy to the development code. Because it says we have to have. It has to be identified by council, but then we don't. Say that the council identified it as a problem.
That's a great catch, yep, we can add the reference to the council goal as well.
And, oh, and the council goal, yes, thank you. Alright, that might be. All the other ones are kind of like. Gene's OCD on capitalization or not. And. My eighth grade English teacher. Which I have to thank him for this. Yeah, all the other ones are not substantive, they're just. Grammatical edits. Does anybody have any other comments on the staff report itself?
I had one on, on page ten.
Okay.
And, uh. This is partly me forgetting, um. A reply in an email, but on policy seven point two. Um, or in a goal seven and policy seven point two, build capacity for greater urban resilience and redundancy in infrastructure. To me, when I read that, I, I see that redundancy in infrastructure is a good thing, it's part of a goal. Um, and then the staff response, the proposed amendment propos- promotes sustainable compact growth patterns. Ensures that infrastructure is designed for resilience and limits redundancy. And so I was just trying to remember, um, to me, that sounds like that's a contradiction. And so, um. Is that correct, or am I, did I misinterpret the staff response to the policy seven point two?
No, no, that, that is correct, so, um. I, I, I think when, when you traditionally think of redundancy, you think of redundancy not necessarily being inherently a good thing, right?
Can be bad, it can be good.
Yes, I think a brain slip a little bit there, but I think when it comes to like infrastructure redundancy. Um, basically you wanna have that kind of built into. Infrastructure, so if a component, for example, fails, uh, it's part of a larger system that's gonna be able to support, um, kind of ongoing until that is addressed at a later time. Um, so we are gonna fix that, that, um, kind of confusion right there, um. Prior to setting off to Jean.
Right, appropriate redundancy, or. Um, make the word general.
Yeah, just, just strike the word limit and, and then kind of just have redundancy, um, kind of be a standalone.
Perfect.
Great, good catch, very good catch.
Sweet.
I have a wording question on page four. This is, um, a staff response to. Concern around goal two. And it says, um, that. This is the second sentence, this argument misapprehends the scope of goal two local government annexation review. Just word seemed kind of odd, do we mean? Misunderstands, or, uh. Some, something else, misapprehends is kind of a strange word.
I used AI and it said. It was kind of okay. Yeah.
Was it a question? Use this word.
We're not, yeah, I won't, we won't lose sleep if we adjust that to misunderstands.
Usually, usually courts use the word misapprehend because it's a little kinder than the word misunderstands.
Misinterprets. So I mean, it's our, it's our response to their, to concern.
We were trying to be nice, we were trying to be nice.
But this is the kinder Jeffler.
This is the lucky way.
I like that.
Okay, then I'll leave it alone, whatever you guys want to do, yeah.
Alright, any other comments, we made it four, ten. Any, anything else in?
Do I need to make a list of all the things we just changed?
No.
And the staff work, no.
No, the staff report's not the.
Okay, good.
Not the thing that goes into the code, but.
It's gonna be a long list.
It's the supportive document that says. Why we believe we can do it.
Okay, alright.
Oh, that was a lot, that was a lot of.
That was just the questions time, and.
Yeah, no, no, we haven't even gotten to public noticing, um.
Alright.
Um, no, thank, thank you commissioners for your feedback, I do really appreciate the, the, the thought bubbles, I think it really helps strengthen. Not only the staff report, but the annexation code as a whole, so, so thank you guys.
So those are the questions, now I will ask if we have anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application?
So, s- so, oh, sorry, so I don't know if we've finished the slideshow.
Oh.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yeah, I think we, we just, we got to like the updated revised information and then. Um, we were gonna get into public noticing.
How many more, how many more slides do we have?
Six more slides, oh my goodness, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll run through them real quick though, just so we can have them captured.
Let's get it all.
How much, um, let's just pause real quick, how much discussion do we think we're gonna have, what I'm getting at is, do we need to, do we need to carry over? It's already, it's almost nine o'clock, so you know, if we feel like we can wrap this stuff up, next. Fifteen minutes, you know, I think I'm happy to keep going, but anything past probably another fifteen minutes, we should, we should hold over till, for another meeting.
Okay.
That, 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 that's my, that's my input, because I don't.
Second that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, yeah, we, we, we don't need to kill ourselves here, um, so depending on, do you guys, do we feel like there's some, some discussion that needs to be had?
All of. Okay, I have no additional, all my stuff's been addressed.
All my, all my stuff's out too, so.
I think, I think we're close then, let's hammer through it.
You have to, you wanna ask your questions or wait for the staff?
I'll wait, I'll wait, okay.
Alright, perfect, um, so as you can kind of see on the screen, there's the public notice, pu- um, public testimony agency comments, uh, from the days that they were routed. Uh, public comments received, um, at the timing of this hearing. Or, or limited to Metro dated April twenty second, Thousand Friends of Oregon dated April twenty first. And Housing Land Advocates and Fair Housing Council of Oregon, a joint letter dated June twenty fourth. Um, in regards to testimony and public comment, those were, uh, addressed within your respective staff reports. And kind of highlighted the main concerns, on the screen, you can kind of just see a very high level overview of, of those concerns. Um, kind of addressed, uh, in the presentation, uh, for further detail, please reference the staff report.
You did a great job addressing the, those letters, that was. Very, very well done, thank you.
I agree.
Well, I'm gonna jump in then, because that's exactly what my question is, do we feel like we, we addressed their concerns and, or do we feel they're gonna take us?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think at this time we've addressed their concerns adequately, um, and especially in terms of stuff that's of, of substance. Um, you know, we worked really closely with our agency partner Metro, and I think that, that was really kind of the big crux of. Of kind of why we've kind of requested continuances is because we wanted to make sure that we were getting it right. Um, before bringing it to you guys for review. Um, and kind of, you know, get the, I, I think, how does Eric, the sausage getting made, um, not making sure that that's not necessarily what. What's kind of happening in real time here. Um, we, we worked really hard with them to address a couple of their major concerns, specifically. Adding depth and parameters to, to define what the city's best interest is, um. Kind of consisting with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, we also looked at adjusting the text to ensure minimum densities. Um, will be addressed, um, at the time of annexation and beyond. Uh, and then we also really looked at defining parameters for the city manager, um, waving annexation policies. So I think initially the, the idea was that the annexation could be, um, have a little bit more discretion, but, um. Kind of adding a little bit more surety, uh, we kind of scaled out those parameters to address the specific situations that those, those instances would really come into play. Yeah. Um, but beyond that, we haven't received any new, new testimony or public comment, um, beyond those three aforementioned, um. Agencies, uh, and, and, uh, nonprofits, and so. Nothing, nothing added to the report since July fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty five. So, so based on all the good conversation that we've had, all the information that we've kind of synthesized together. Staff recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval for LU twenty twenty four zero one A. PA to the city council, subject to the findings and conditions outlined, and the staff report dated. Um, July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, I know we've kind of made some good adjustments and, and conversation, those are gonna get incorporated as well, uh, into the forwarding. Um, if, if planning commission is amicable. Um, alternatively, uh, beyond just recommending, um, recommending forward approval of the application and forwarding it on to, um. City council, they can also, uh. Recommend revised findings and conditions, uh, they can also recommend denial of, of the proposed text amendment. Uh, and then that concludes staff's presentation.
My apologies for like, going down a path that did not follow. The script provided to me prior to the hearing, so, and.
Good conversations.
And however many years of experience of listen to the staff report before you dive into all your questions, so. Appreciate the consideration staff did in, in going through the process a bit out of order, so. Um. We are in the middle of a public hearing, we have now completed the applicant and staff. Re- recommendations, and so now we will call for, um, any citizens. That wish to speak in favor of the application, and again, if anybody wishes to testify this evening. We'll ask you to fill out a blue card and turn it into the staff ahead of time.
Wow, alright.
And we'll have you fill that out afterwards, if you would like to just, just bring it up to the deus with you, and you can, and you'll have. Okay, so we do not have, um, anyone in favor of the application. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak against the application? And do we have anybody that wishes to provide neutral testimony? Alright, we have a member of the audience and we'll have you fill out a blue card when you've, uh, completed your testimony, and if you could. Turn on the microphone in front of you and start with, uh, you have to hold it down, I think, and make it red somehow.
Make green.
Make it green.
Oh, that's, that's a different microphone.
Hold it down, push it hard.
There we go, it's red, and if you can start with your name and address for the recorded record, that would be great.
My name is Levi Lavassa, uh, my address is one six four nine one Southwest Willow Drive, Sherwood, Oregon. Um, I live in Sherwood, but I'm also a developer. Uh, with interest in Sherwood, so I've got kind of two sides of things here, but, uh, my comments are mostly. Neutral, um, uh, with a couple thoughts on annexation agreements. Uh, seeing them in many jurisdictions, there's pros and cons to it for sure. Uh, my main feedback and concern is. Has been voiced, uh, from some of the commissioners, but it's the. Amount of detail that you need early on. Uh, the risk there is that as most annexations are typically gonna be legislative. Uh, there's a lot of money spent on the front end, getting to that level of detail. When it could be turned down in a legislative decision, so there's a little more risk there. Uh, on the development side, uh, that you're taking to get to that level of, you know, I know exactly what I'm doing here. Before I know if I can even come in. And there's a lot of money spent on that front end, so I think just the level of detail required. Uh, to go into an annexation agreement is something that I would, I, hopefully there's some parameters there. Um, just because if you see somewhere like Portland, in some cases, uh, they make you go to really intense. Engineering before they ever give you a land use approval, which. They might not give you in the end, and you've spent, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering at that point. So just something to consider, um, at the staff level and then. Commissioners when you're thinking about how you make your recommendations, so, that's all I got. Thanks, any questions?
So, uh, just for clarification, you're, you're, you're saying at the, uh, city of Portland. If you wanna do something, you have to get an engineering, go through all the full processes before. Yeah, I mean, that kind of is a land use process versus an annexation process, or is it, they, or they do the same thing for both?
There's the land use, so if you want a subdivision approval, you have to get to seventy percent engineering plans, which engineering plans are a lot more expensive. Lot of time vested in that, and you don't have necessarily the assurance that you're gonna be able to do it in the end. Uh, and so that's kind of my concern on a little earlier in the process, though, with an annexation, if I'm having to go to a. Subdivision level detail in engineering. Early on, and then it's a legislative decision on whether or not I can annex. There's no criteria at that point because it's a policy decision, right?
Okay.
So quasi judicial, I just have to meet the rules and. You either approve or deny based on whether or not I prove that I meet those legislative. Whether I meet the request of the city or not. You don't have to approve my application, but I have now spent years and a lot of money to get to this point. When ultimately it's a policy decision that can and should be in the power of the council to, to make that decision, but. To require an annexation agreement with so much detail in it, uh, just poses more risk for development, and so. Uh, at some point when. The risk and cost gets so high, and you try and mitigate, uh, you know, maybe with the, the price that you're buying land with. Eventually, that's just not worth people selling their land, and so there's, there's balancing act, and so I just hope there's, there's balance there. And it's been, it's been effective in other cities for sure, so I think there's definitely a place for annexation or development agreements. Uh, I'm a fan of the development agreements, because then you're in the city, but then you have to prove, prove through your subdivision. Application that you can, in fact, do all this, but I, I see the, the benefit of getting it out of the way early too, I just wanted. Going into too much detail too early can be, be a risk that just needs to be balanced.
Yeah. Does it, from your perspective, does it appear like we have balance then in ours?
It's just not super specific, so, uh, uh, it's pretty typical language, and the, my concern is. When it's. A little bit vague, it's totally dependent on the staff and the commissioners and the council.
Mm-hmm.
And when you have a really good staff to work with, it's great.
Mm-hmm.
Or when you have a really good commission or council that's, uh, pro, pro smart growth, then it's really great, but in some jurisdictions. Um, in the region, there are councils that weren't there initially at the startup growth, um, effort. And then they. Come in and now they're shutting stuff down that has been worked on for, for years by, so. It's just some, a little more clarity on like the level, I think is, is useful, but. Um, I think the language in here at least gives the opportunity to prove that it's serviceable. And so as long as we're not going to, you know, engineering level serviceable. Uh, just, you know, it's at the edge of the property, there's capacity there, in some cities they do, uh, um. Sewer and water analysis ahead of time, which would hopefully be resolved by whatever, uh, master plans are adopted. Uh, for utilities, but they just do a quick analysis, say, yeah, we think based on your, your use, uh, that you're anticipating it'll, it'll work. And you just give them a range, you know, here's our, I think that's what's happening here, I just wanna, I. There are other jurisdictions where it's gone too far, so.
Excellent, I appreciate you providing that testimony, it's, it's a. It's another side where, you know, we're volunteers, so sometimes we need to see what, what development looks like. So that we can incorporate that into a good decision, so I appreciate your time.
Of course. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um. We do not have anybody else in the audience, so, um. Does the staff have anything to add which addresses a question raised during, uh, the testimony?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Does any member of the commission have questions regarding the testimony? Or anything else before the commission for the decision? Before I close the public testimony portion of this hearing? And before I close it, is there any desire of the commission to continue this to another meeting? Or are we ready to make a motion?
I'd like to get it done, yes. I also appreciate what was stated, I do think we hashed that around quite a bit earlier as well. And I, I mean, uh, code and law is a tricky thing, I mean, subjectivity in some laws is good, as long as it's. As long as you're governed by reasonable people. Um, and then you get more prescriptive to mitigate that sometimes, and it has downsides too, but this is Sherwood and. You know, we can always revisit legislatively if we need to, if it gets out of hand as well. That's my question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I will say on record many times that we have an amazing staff right now that has been. Yes. Pro community smart development, which has been just, um. Just a breath of fresh air as we've gone through all these different changes, so. If we don't have any other testimony, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And the public testimony portion is now complete. Move into deliberation, are there any further questions of staff from commission?
You said you had two, I heard one, did we get the other one? Ah, excellent. Two birds, one's efficient.
Alright, and is there any discussion before we have a motion? And then, um, just, just make sure that, uh, commissioners online, we can't see you, just wanna make sure that if you have any questions or comments. Um, speak now, raise your hand or jump in. Alright.
Okay, I, um, want to make sure I have the right motion language here, because this is, I move Sherwood Planning Commission, approve the application. Okay, okay, so number nine.
Yes.
Alright, okay. Recommissioned to council, alright, great, um, real quick clarification as I name. The project name, I've actually two different names today, so our, our staff report says annexation policies. But we've been calling it annexation code. Is this just a distinction without a difference, or is there a difference in words and what should I call it? Real quick, just want to make sure I'm clearly stating what. We've been talking a lot about code, but I don't know if there's a difference in policies, which is what it's called in the document.
Yeah, so I I think we, we have to go with the annexation policies, um, particularly because that's kind of what we've been. Um, closely knowing it is, and then we've also publicly noticed it is that.
Okay.
So it is a plan amendment titled annexation policies.
Okay, alright, that dealt with code. Okay. Alright, here we go. I move. The Sherwood Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. For annexation policies, file number LU twenty twenty four dash zero zero one eight P A. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received and the analysis findings and conditions in the staff report with the following modifications. Staff will clarify three sections of attachment A. Attachment A paragraph three.
Page three.
I'm sorry, page three, page three, part seven regarding adequate funding, clarity there. Attachment A, page four, part A, clarification of awareness of the annexation process. And attachment A, page seven, part three, clarification, annexation agreement. That is it.
Alright, it has been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded that we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for. LU twenty twenty four zero one A P A annexation policies. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimonies you received and analysis findings and conditions of the staff report. With the modifications previously detailed. Any discussion? All in mo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, before we close this matter. The city council hearing is scheduled for August. Fifth. And that's the date certain unless they continue it at their.
Correct.
Noticed meeting, okay. Alright, uh, new business, we have none noted, is there any new business? Okay, then moving on. Commissioner comments. I just want a, uh, website and interested party list, is that, that came a thought in my mind. Is that still in the process, the ETA for the website, the interested parties where we can. Sign up to be notified of projects and ongoing things, is that?
Just for general land use, um, like updates and things, or?
I used to be on like an interested party list every time a planning commission meeting. Packet was put out there, I could get notified of it as a citizen. Or I could sign up for the T S P project, or I could sign up for Old Town Projects, and with the website. Changes and maybe getting broken, I don't get my interested party list notifications anymore.
Was it for, uh, things in addition to planning and land use, was it like citywide events and other stuff, or just specific to planning?
It was not just specific to planning.
Okay, let me, let me take a, let me take that back to our T department, figure out what's going on.
Okay.
I what I'll say is the new website is, even though there might be some transition issues, it's gonna provide a lot more opportunity for really seamless engagement. So there's a lot of opportunities coming, but we need to take a look and we can circle back with you.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people that want to be engaged are now able to sign up. And if we need to put notices back out to the community to say. Planning announcements or budget notices or things like that, this is how you sign up for these ongoing notifications. So that we can get back to the engagement level of people that want to receive those in emails. Alright. Any other comments? Then hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time. And thank you for testifying this evening.